Welcome to the Board of Education's April 2nd Work Session.
Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Pike.
Face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. The Strategic Plan Committee will meet next Monday on April 8th at noon in this boardroom, and Ms. Christie will be providing us with an update on the committee's work just a little bit later in the evening. Are there any requested changes to the meeting agenda? Do the motion to approve? Motion by Mabbis Horn, a second by Mr. Watson, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Dr. Rieswick, do you have an update?
Thank you, Ms. And I know I was like...
Sorry, I went too fast.
I was like, okay, we'll go.
Trying to beat those storms.
Yeah, I like that, too. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thanks for the chance to provide a few updates. I'd like to begin by highlighting two important events. Last Wednesday, I had the privilege of attending the KCS Region 5 Stakeholder Breakfast, which we held at the Change Center. It was exciting to reflect on the first year of implementation and on the plan to hear about the incredible work that's begun in Region 5. As you know, the Region 5 Strategic Plan includes actions, metrics, and milestones to foster high expectations and strong achievement outcomes. While I was pleased to hear from students, district leaders, and teachers about the progress that's already been made in one short year, these reports were also a reminder of the important work that's still ahead for us. The Region 5 Strategic Plan was created with input and long-term commitment from parents, community members, private sector, and nonprofit partners, and our students. Our work is nowhere close to finished, but our meeting last week proved to me that the continued support of our community and dedication to our students, teachers, and administrators will be able to transform the plan into success for every student in Region 5. So I want to thank again all those who attended and the community breakfast, and a special thanks to our Region 5 educators for their amazing work. Very important work, and you know, like we said, we know this is a marathon. I know Ms. Owen, Reverend Butler, and Ms. Henderson were all there. Great chance to just see that and hear from our people who are doing the work. But there is still work to be done, so excited about that. I also want to point out that the 2024 KCS Recruitment Fair will take place on Saturday, April 6th, at West High School. We're always looking for outstanding teachers, administrators, and school staff, and the Recruitment Fair is an excellent way to learn more about opportunities that are available to join our team. I believe that's nine to 11 is the time for that. Okay, good, got confirmation from Jennifer. If you know someone who would be a great candidate, please encourage them to visit our website at knoxschools.org/retrupmentfair to learn more and to register for the event. And finally, in just a few minutes, Jennifer Himmelgarn, our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Talent, will be presenting a report about our proposed salary schedule. This proposal is based on the compensation and classification study that we conducted in recent months, and Jennifer will provide all the details. But I do believe this process gives us a sense of our efforts to prioritize our district employees and team members, and it demonstrates how much we value their work. I want to thank everyone in our Business and Talent Division for their extensive work in this proposal, which has been quite a bit, a lot. You'll hear more about that today, and I know you've been hearing about it in the last couple of months. And then finally, I want to remind families that on April 8th, we will be a half day for students as Knox County experiences a partial solar eclipse. This is a great learning opportunity. The Science Department will be providing educational materials and solar glasses for students to safely observe the event with their families. Kudos to Andrea Berry, this is just a side note. Talking to the East Tennessee superintendents, and they were all, they're all doing half-days now, too, since we did. But they were, they were asking, apparently there's a glasses shortage, and Andrea had the knowledge to way ahead of time, buy them for like cents on the dollar. And if we could make money, we could make a ton, but we're not allowed to sell things. So kudos to Andrea Berry for doing that. So, Madam Chair, that concludes my report for the evening.
That's awesome, thank you, Dr. Rieswick. I think next up, we have Dr. Brown. You have a report on the Student Success Review? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board. Just wanted to give you guys an update, since I've now been in the job six weeks. I thought it was a good time to let you know where we are and what was going on.
Well-seasoned.
That's right. It didn't take long. All right, I'm gonna mess this thing up. Turn it on. Pro tip. There we go. All right, so again, just wanted to revisit the KCS Way for Special Education. Obviously, our goal in this is to provide quality educational, a special educational experience for all of our students. Also, I think on the, on the agenda tonight, we mentioned this was a Student Success Update. We are going to focus tonight on special education. That doesn't mean we're not, we're not doing work in the LL space and all those others. As you all will see, and some of you have already talked through the budget, there are some additions this year for LL teachers and supports. We're opening a newcomer academy in the fall, so some exciting work happening there. But tonight, we're mostly going to talk about special education and just that strategic direction that we're providing. And tonight specifically, we're going to talk about some of the website improvements and also our RFP that's going out to do a deep dive into our practices and all of our special ed scope of work. So, but before I got into that, thought I'd take an opportunity just to share with you all a little bit about my history and where I've been. I know a lot of us have talked, and, and I mentioned at the last board meeting how, you know, after getting over the initial shock of having a new job, eight months into the new job that I just took, and really having time to reflect, I feel like this is a great place for me to be, and I don't think there's a better place to make a difference in the life of students, and so I'm really excited about this opportunity. As a teacher, I spent seven years in the classroom as a biology teacher and was immediately immersed in the world of special education. In my first semester, I had a co-taught class. And even throughout the seven years, you know, most teachers think that the pathway to success is working your way up to teaching AP classes, and I did that. And then, all of a sudden, I found my principal was giving me inclusion classes again, and I thought that was a question of my ability to teach. Then a few years later, I became an administrator, and what I realized is, no, that they trusted me with those students, and they knew that I would take care of them. And so really, I feel like my career has been about identifying and removing barriers to education for all students, and that's why I'm excited about this work. After leaving the classroom, I became an elementary principal, and I spent 10 years in the elementary school. My elementary school in the district, I was not in Knox County at that time, but I spent 10 years at an elementary school. And my school in that small district was the one that housed all of our special ed pre-K programs. And so, because it's a small district, what they tried to do is they tried, we couldn't have a continuum of services within a single school, and so each school had a certain thing that that was their program. After developing relationships and building trust with those families, they didn't want to leave, they didn't want to go to a program in another school, and so we actually expanded programming, and we added programs at our school to provide that continuum of services within our own school building. And then when I moved back to Knox County and became a secondary principal, I spent some time in a middle school that had a very robust special ed program, and then also then moved to a high school where we did a lot of work, not just in the special ed world, but then also I had pretty significant LL populations and also did a lot of work with the school culture department. So with Janice Cook and her team, really looking at positive behavior strategies and restorative practices, and saw her great. As a matter of fact, when I, my time at South Hill Middle School, I actually wrote my dissertation on the results we saw reducing suspensions by 76% at the middle school. So, really exciting things. But the thing that I've found through all of it is none of that happens in isolation. You have to have a great team of people around you, and that's why I'm so excited about this opportunity is because we have a lot of great structures in place, and we're heading in the right direction. We've got, you know, a parent council that we're working with, and we have a principal council we're working with. We have great department and great people. So, a little bit about kind of our path to success and what I feel like is the way to get there, and I kind of alluded to this a minute ago. I think it all starts with relationships. I think everything meaningful that happens has to begin with relationship, and through that, building trust. And so I have, I've started this work by trying to build those relationships. We've already met with all the key stakeholders and talked about the work and gotten some feedback from them, just beginning that working relationship. And through that, I feel like they get to know you as a person and get to know your heart for kids. And that's what's important, and that's how you establish trust, because there's always going to be those times where we may not see eye to eye on how things go. But if at the end of the day, people know that your, that your compass is doing what's right for that student, then, then I think you build some trust in that. I mentioned a minute ago, collaboration. None of this work is done in isolation. It takes a team, and it takes a village, to quote the African proverb. But we have to have a group of people surrounding each and every individual student, making sure that that collective knowledge is making the best decision for the child. And I think when you do this, that the end result is success for every student, which is what we want. So, again, finding those common goals, committing to creating those opportunities, and overcoming those barriers, and I think that's, that's the key to success. All right, so just a quick recap in my first six weeks. Again, some of this may be a little bit repetitive, but again, a lot of it for me has been getting to know the work and getting to know our team and our stakeholders. As I mentioned, I've already had the opportunity to meet with the Special Education Council a couple of times. We have a text thread, so I'm constantly in communication with them, making sure we're on the same page. Again, working together, I think that's the biggest thing that I've seen, is there's a perception, which in a lot of cases becomes people's reality. And the perception is, is that we're on opposite sides of the table. And I think that that perception has to go away. We have to prove that we're all on the same team, and we're all working for students to get better outcomes. So, met with the Special Education Council, we've had some great meetings and gotten a lot of great input. I've also met with our principal council, talking about, you know, some of the, some of the things and how our work impacts them at the school level, and how we can support them in that work, how we can provide professional development and other things to prepare them to be great leaders in the world of special education within their building. I've also had some individual parent meetings. I've had parents reach out to me about concerns they've had, and so we've talked about those things. And hopefully, you know, again, just establishing those relationships and beginning to build some trust that we're going to do the right thing for their students. As far as where we're going with the things that have been promised prior to me coming on board, I think the next steps that we're going to talk about. So we have submitted the RFP, we've been working with county procurement to get that done. As of today, I'd have to pull, I left my phone over there, so no one would bother me. But the, the county has it, they are planning to do the final revision. They think it will be published Thursday or Friday, and then we'll go live next Monday. So that's pretty exciting. And, and we're also working on some other concerns that I've heard about private practitioners. Again, and I've told everyone who's emailed me about this, if you think back six months ago, we didn't allow private practitioners. So the fact that they're even in our buildings at all is a lot of progress. Have we perfected the process yet? Absolutely not. And we're going to continue to work on that, and we're going to work together as we all have the discussion at Policy Review. You know, we're not in the right place yet, but we're, we're working in the right direction. And that does take time, and I understand, you know, that's, patience is virtue, and I don't always have it. So I understand the frustration that people feel with that. But we are making great strides, we're moving in the right direction. The work is not done, the work is never done. We've still got a long, a long way to go and a lot of work to do. But again, I want to go back to what I said earlier. We have great people, there's not a single person on our team that I haven't taken something to and immediately they've said yes, or I was already working on that, or I've got this ready. So we've got great people that are ready to do the work, and at the end of the day, every single person on our team shows up every single day wanting to do what's right for our students. So that's encouraging to me. Little bit about, again, our website improvements. The whole purpose of this is really just to make life easier on parents. Hopefully, we're going to see improved navigation and quicker and easier access to the support that they need. We're also going to be updating information. You can't really see over there, but there's going to be a lot of links to documents and things where parents in one click can get to what they need. And that, what you see in the really small print there is that consolidated Special Education Resource Library, where they have the resources for all the things. And again, met with the Special Ed Council, we showed them this. Our communications team did a great job of rolling this out and showing them some of the proposed changes. Took some feedback, and we're going to make some edits. I think at this point, the plan is, as of next week, we're going to roll it out and make it live. So again, that's not, I don't know what buttons you push and how that happens, but apparently that, that's going to happen next Monday. So, so we'll see how that goes. And again, our promise to the council and to everybody is that, just like with the private practitioner, it's not going to be perfect, but hopefully it's going to be better than what we had, and we will continue to work on it in that, in that spirit of continuous improvement. So, and I think according that in August, we're going to see a complete relaunch of our entire website. So hopefully, we're piloting something here for the special education website that hopefully we'll see full scale this fall. All right, RFP I mentioned, again, that, again, what we're looking at is a comprehensive review of all of our special education services, our systems, our structures, our supports. We've seen some really good reports and really crafted the RFP to do a deep dive, to take a look at, you know, and there's not a single person on my team that didn't, hasn't said, like, we're all in favor of continuous improvement. We want to get better, because in the end, our students are the ones who benefit from that. Out of that report, what we're hoping to get is some recommendations of some very actionable, evidence-based efficiency and efficacy improvements. And then obviously, the end goal is to develop then a three- to five-year player of implementation of those recommendations. So hopefully, we will walk out of this with a three- to five-year plan to get us headed in the right direction and continue to make that continuous improvement with some measurables moving forward. So as I said, it's been submitted. They, they're telling me, just like the website, next, next Monday's going to be an exciting day in the world of special ed, so we're going to have the RFP going live and hopefully the website. And so we'll hopefully at that point, you know, have some good people make proposals, and we'll have some vendors that then we can bring to you guys and move forward with that analysis of our services. All right, so again, I've probably mentioned most of this, but looking ahead at what we've got going on in our next steps, as I mentioned, we're still working on the private practitioners. And I know that some members of our team are working on that. We're going to work back and forth with the council, Mr. Dupler get his input on that. We mentioned the potential development of an MOU. I don't know if that's where we'll land, but we're going to, again, we're going to check it out and see what works for everybody and make that happen. Continued improvements to the website and providing those special ed resources for our families. The next step, after the RFP hits the streets and we get some selections, we'll, we'll bring back to you the selection of a technical assistance partner who then develop our strategic plan for special education. And again, this, this work never ends. So we're going to continue to work with our Special Education Council, with our Principal Council, making sure that all the changes we're making, you know, they work at the school level, they work for the parents, they work for the students, and just approaching everything with that, with that spirit of continuous improvement. And I just want to say again, I mentioned last time, I really do appreciate this opportunity. You know, this is a, is an exciting opportunity for me. And I think I mentioned to several people, when, when Dr. Rieswick asked me to do this, they said, "Congratulations, I guess." And I said, "What do you mean, I guess?" There are five assistant superintendents in this district, and he's asked me to be one of them. And not just that, and again, I'm biased, but in my opinion, he's asked me to be the assistant superintendent over the most important one. And that's, that's, you know, the area where we can have the greatest impact on students and removing those barriers, whether it's, you know, a language barrier with our LL students, it's a learning disability, whatever it is, you know. It's, it's our job to identify and remove those barriers so that every single kid can experience student success. So that's, that's our goal. Have any questions, Ms. Pike? I see you have your...
I have a question, thank you. I appreciate all this work that you're doing. I know everyone is working so hard for this, and I'm excited to see our website improved for everyone. I'm curious with this rollout, if you'll be including either with the rollout or at some point, some sort of infographics that are a little bit more digestible for kind of like a process of like, for private practitioners of like, you know, start here, this, this, yes, yes, no, yes, no. And then also for like special education of like where you start and stuff like that. Because I know a lot of parents, sometimes it's just understanding the system.
Sure.
And getting confused.
Yeah, no, you're exactly right. And yes, that's the purpose, is to make it easier to access all of those things. That document, like I said, those little black, those were all links to places. And when we went through, again, that was one of the things the parents said, well, this is great. Like, because I can click on this one thing, and it says, you know, I have a question about how to get an IP, or, you know, I have a 504, or my student had an S team, what's next? So really, just trying to slow-walk people through the process, because you can get lost in the weeds. And so we want to make sure that everybody has a good understanding of how to access the services that are available to their, their children.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Brown, thank you.
Dr. Brown, thank you for jumping all in with both feet, twice in less than a year, so appreciate you doing that. I just have one question, I know that you're working on, the RFP is about to be out in the public and working on getting a technical assistance partner, when would you hope to have a strategic plan completed? I know it's a three to five-year plan, but what's your goal in terms of trying to...
I mean, I'd love to have it, this is not realistic. First of all, I'll tell you, I'll be completely honest...
What's your realistic goal?
I have never been involved in this process before, I mean, obviously, just leaving the school. I don't even know the time for, that it has to be on the street before we can begin looking at people, and I know we've got to have a certain number, so I'm brand new to this whole process, and like I said, I'd love to have it done and work on it and be, you know, have it ready to roll out for next school year, but I realize that's probably not a realistic goal. Like I said, I don't know the January, okay.
I'm not accounting for...
I'm deferring to Ms. Lautner on this one.
Sorry. I would have to look at Jennifer for procurement timelines, but I would say that you would need to do this work meaningfully, probably a minimum of two to three months of working with that technical assistance partner before you actually even begin to look at implementation. So probably second semester at the earliest.
Yeah, and that's probably, honestly, I would say that's even probably a lofty goal, just because, you know, with the scope of what we're asking and having, you know, 60,000 students in 91 schools, for them to truly take a look at our practices and, you know, look through all of our policies and the way we operate, and go and, you know, visit classrooms and see what inclusion looks like, and see what all of our continuum of services looks like for students, it's probably going to take a while for them to actually do the research and dig in before they can even bring us recommendations, and then we'd have, you know, from that point, to develop a strategic plan following that. So January would be great, but if we can even have it done, you know, within the next school year, and then have it ready to go for the 25, 26 school year, that would probably be...
Yeah, thank you, and thanks for the candid for that, because for people who have been chomping at the bit for this, which I think there's a fair amount, I want to make sure that we set reasonable expectations, that, you know, there's a process to this, and we're not necessarily going to get there fast, but we can get there well, right, if we do the right things in between, so.
Yeah, and as I mentioned before, it'll happen as soon as it can happen, because I'm not a man who's been blessed with a lot of patience, and I freely admit that. Like, I see how things can be, and I want them to be that way now. And so, you know, I will work as hard as I can to get it done as fast as we can get it done, because again, it's like everything, our kids deserve it, so.
Cool, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I just appreciate the work, I know you're, welcome to your first presentation for the board, good job, you did well.
I do want to say, if it wasn't as good as Ms. Lautner's, that's because she does the presentations, and I think she has a bias.
I think that's probably fair, that's probably fair.
I know last week, last month, we had the best presentation ever.
That's true, we did, so...
She probably sabotaged me, so I'm just going to go on record to say that.
I know there's been a lot of pressure around the private practitioners, I know, trying to get all that figured out, I know that's a new thing for us, and so now, obviously, this administrative procedures you're trying to work on, do you expect that to be finished before the end of the year, school year, or are you thinking that's going to take some time to figure out and...
I mean, again, that may be when I need to defer to Mr. Dupler on, we're working on it currently, and then we're going to take it back to the council. Obviously, I think what we left the policy meeting with is let's fix the procedure, and let's get everything in line, and then we'll adjust the policy. So, you know, I know that Chelsea Price is working with Alicia Jones right now to work on some edits to that procedure and make sure we include maybe some stipulations about if we're going to allow teleservices, what that looks like, so we can really outline that, so we maintain consistency in all of our buildings.
Sure.
So once we get that, you know, we'll present that and, you know, let you guys know, and make whatever adjustments and bring that back to Policy Review along with the changes we've made, so you know where we are. I would say, realistically, I don't think we'll have anything in place before school's out, I mean, it's April now, I'd say by the time we get through this, and even if we could bring the policy back to you guys in May, you know, that wouldn't leave a whole lot of time left in this school year, so I would think realistically, we're probably looking at a process that would probably be hopefully in place and fine tuned a little better for next August and the start of school.
I agree. Good, well done.
A stamp of approval.
If there's anything we can do to support that, or, you know, even bringing something outside of Policy Review to the May meeting, if you feel like that's necessary, I think we'd be happy to take a look at that and, you know, see what that looks like, so, but...
Yeah, we're currently working on the procedure, and so like I said, if we can just make the changes in the procedure and it doesn't require policy review change, then, you know, we'll make sure we outline those things there and advertise that and post it, and make sure that all of our BCBAs and our private practitioners are aware of the change in procedure, so that they can fall in line and continue to provide services.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, I agree, you know, we really appreciate this, welcome to, you know, your second new job.
That's right.
You're doing a great job.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for all your hard work. I think, you know, this work isn't easy at all, but it's very meaningful work, and I think we all agree that we want to see results and, you know, the changes that the students and families deserve, so thank you for all the work you're putting in.
Thank you all, I appreciate the opportunity.
Lots of presentations tonight, Jennifer's up next with, Jennifer's going to update us on the salary study recommendations.
Madam Chair, members of the board, like Dr. Reiswick said, this has been a significant undertaking from a lot of people in the Business and Talent Division, and Scott Bolton has led that group for Business and Talent and has been the primary contact with Evergreen Solutions LLC. So we are going to tag team, but I'm going to give him the opportunity to share with you all the impact this could have on our employees.
Perfect, sounds good.
Madam Chair, board members.
Hello, Mr. Bolton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, thank you for this opportunity to talk about something I think that is really exciting, that a lot of people are, there's a lot of rumblings going on about it, but it's been exciting to be a part of it and implementing this. Let me make sure, do I need to turn this on? Okay, you turned it off, there we go, there we go, now we're good. This comprehensive salary study is investing in people, and I will say that it's strategically investing in people, making the effective investment in people because we're determining it based on market value and comparing to other districts. It is a significant difference to what we've seen in the past, and we're focusing on the greatest asset that exists in Knox County Schools in terms of moving the needle for our student performance, which is our employees. And this was an opportunity, again, to identify national best practices and leverage in our compensation strategies and really make a dent in the employee retention and recruitment process. We were looking at creating consistency across the board when it comes to our job classifications and our compensation together, to make sure that what one position is at one school, it's equivalent to that in another school, and it's paid appropriately there as well. And then looking at the market value of those job classes and job positions across the district, and when we talk about market value, we look at that comparison that was made across 19 other different school districts, and what that looks like with, relative to cost of living in each place, and then simplify our existing salary structure. It's pretty complex for a lot of people to see, let me make sure, there we go. So again, $39 million is a lot of money, it's a lot of money, but it's our opportunity to give the opportunity to put the money where it needs to be in the efficient and effective way, and that means every person in KCS. There will not be a single person that makes less than what they've made before, and by and large, the large majority of folks in Knox County Schools will make, will see a improvement in their salary over the next year. We hope that means fewer vacancies, we hope that means improved retention, and we hope that that means doing what's right by people. So it's huge. And this is, Evergreen's recommendation, they recommended that the district adopt a methodology to transition employees to salaries in the proposed pay plan that aligns with its established compensation philosophy and meets the available financial resources of the institution. So basically, let's take the money, let's look at what we can afford, and let's invest that in our people in an appropriate and effective and efficient way across the district. So when we look at this, there is a change for a lot of people in our school district, but for the most part, not a significant change for the majority of employees in our school district. The majority of employees in our school district are by and large our certified teachers, and they will see something that's similar to what they've seen in the past, in a sense that there will be a lane and step scale that is based on a bachelor's and a master's degree and steps out over 20 years. What you will notice on that scale is that there's consistency between each of those steps, that there is a bump at steps five, step 10, step 15, and step 20. And the intention of that is to promote retention, so I'm getting close to that larger bump in my tenure here with Knox County Schools and staying to that mark. And that bump is a significant bump, you'll see four times the amount of a difference in that five-year bump than what you'll see in the previous bump. So there's consistency across the scale, there's not a widening of the scale, as we have typically administered a 4% administration of a percent increase, you have also seen the disparity increased by 4%. And our consultants have told us that where we want to stay is about a 65% spread in that, and every time that we do a 4% increase, our spread continues to get wider and wider and wider, and so this brings alignment into that. It eliminates the administrative and supplement scales that we currently have, so you're going to see a way more simplified version of our salary scales going forward. This is a profile of each different subgroups, I know this has been a, something that a lot of people have wanted to look at, please know this isn't proportional, so you can't like track back and look at what those proportional amounts are, there are things that went into considering where each of these would be, but you can see a sizable increase, and we tried to look at the span across each of those different categories of folks. On the left-hand side, you'll see the profile of a teacher. We wanted to take snapshots at different places in the tenure of that teacher and across the different grade levels, grade bands. I know they're probably moving away and pulling off the degrees above a master from the scale, there's a lot of angst about that, but I wanted to show a representative picture of what that looks like going forward. You'll also see a special ed teacher assistant, and what was nice about job class, in this job class study, we were able to separate regular TAs from special ed TAs from satellite TAs, and we've, so we've created that on our job scale and doing that. So here's a profile of a sped TA, and we spent a considerable amount of time, you know, talking about those and filling those vacancies and how critical they are to delivering the mission of the schools. And so I wanted to take a picture of what it looks like on step one, the step 14. I want to also draw your attention on this one particularly, because you've got step 14, our typical scales where our TAs would fall would end at step 14. Now that scale's going to progress out to step 20. So you're going to see some folks that have been long-tenured employees with us that have been stuck on step 14 for a longer period of time, get the benefit of advancing beyond that related to how long they've been in that job class. This is a typical profile of an instructional coach that you'll see. Again, previously, what we had on our salary scale was this convoluted, you get this teacher base, then you get this supplement on top of it, you get a different contract, now we're just going to have a single line for those that are instructional coaches, and they'll be assigned to a grade band, and you can see with full transparency where those folks will fall on that scale. And let me go back to this, in making that transition, it's important that I looked at different periods of tenure throughout the school district, different opportunities, and so you'll see a reference to early career and late career, so as we moved away from a single lane scale into a multi-tiered lane scale into a more simplistic, it's hard to actually generalize to some extent, so I picked specific points for people to look at. Here's another profile of a custodian, we've had a lot of conversations about those, and you'll see that represented here with, in terms of what does it mean to a custodian who's on step eight and how they advance in the next year. We wanted to look at an RN, so I looked specifically at RN, RN early in their career versus late in their career, and also a secretary. And just to draw, as you may recall, the board is very, has been very generous, and a custodian, previously, you all had granted, graciously granted 12% increase to custodians, to secretaries, to TAs, and so you'll actually see a sizable increase there as well. Then I also wanted to pull in, what does the profile of a principal look like? Again, a principal, an assistant administrator, an assistant principal, so this way you could kind of see where they would land, and previously, again, where we were building on top of this complex system, a teacher base, a supplement on top of that, going to a single lane in our scale. And so this is, to the left-hand side, a principal, an elementary principal, that's kind of at the middle of their career, and then you'll see where they were, where they end up, and then take an example of a middle school principal, similar, at the middle of their career, and you can kind of see what that looks like going across those different job classes. This is the grade band for the certified staff, again, it's a little different from what they've seen previously, but I'll just point out the differences between those. You're seeing nothing on the scale above a masters, that will be paid on a stipend aside from that, but you're seeing two grade bands, and what you'll notice here is going to be equal distance apart of that. It's important as we look at our scales, that from one step to the next is an expected amount that is there. I want you to notice particularly to those large jumps, you can see how they stand out, you know, we may want to look at marketing that for the purpose. You see from step three to step four is the same thing from step one to step two, but when you get to step five, you get a shot in the arm, and you can see that here, you see a big jump when it comes from step four to step five. You'll see that same jump when it's going from step nine to step 10. You'll see that same jump, again, from 14 to 15. So you'll see those jumps on the chart for the purpose of being systematic for retention and things like that, but it's transparent, it's full, what we could expect, and hopefully it has that retention aspect to it. So the next one is, when I show the next slide, it's going to be, there's a lot going on there, but if you look at a sheet of paper, I promise it's way more simple. We have a general pay grade that have, or 40 different pay grades to the left-hand side of it. That's representative of every school, every position in the school district fits along one of those pay grades. And then the transition to that pay grade, where the person will be, will be placed on different factors. For the purpose of transitioning to this, we're looking at class year parity, which means if they've been in the position to some extent for five years, then they're going to be on step five of that scale that's aligned to it. There is a caveat to that, one of the things when we pursued this process was we didn't want to take anybody back a step. So if a person comes in somewhat, there were a handful of positions that were actually above market value and some things like that, so the correction that we used for that, they would be laterally slotted to the appropriate step on there. So that's something that we would look at, but on this pay scale, you'll see a progression of 4% between each pay grade, and you'll see that as you go across. Again, it completely eliminates the administrative supplement scale that we previously had, and then the positions that were based off that certified scale, so when we were looking previously on the teacher base, and a lot of these positions are on the teacher base, but some of those positions previously were not on the teacher base, they were on a classified or a Z scale or something like that. There was no application of any degrees or certifications higher than a master's degree or a bachelor's degree. What's nice about this is we'll be able to actually stop in those people with higher degrees and certifications, much like we do with teachers when it comes to those amounts. If you're, hey, if you happen to be a teacher's assistant, but you've got a doctorate, guess what, you get a $5,000 stipend on top of that. So that's, it's not just limited to certified folks, it goes throughout all scales. And just to keep in mind, that on the scale that we're presenting, there's 40 grade bands, but from 36 to 40, there's nobody going to be placed on those scales. Our salary study consultant said we want to get a scale in which we could grow into, should we ever need to grow into, and so on, there's not going to be anybody placed on the top four of our scales. Oh, that's a lot, isn't it? So as you look at this salary scale, each job class will be assigned to a potential, will be assigned to a class grade. It's caveat to this, in a sense that the University of Tennessee Systems, in which we share a building with, went through a three-year class study and actually came to the same conclusions that we came to in terms of grade class of system that's very simple, very similar to this. And it's interesting, you can actually look at their positions, where they fall on what's been projected on ours, and we're pretty spot on when it comes to those job classes. And we're pretty spot on when it comes to those job classes. So it's been pretty interesting to triangulate between somebody who did, a whole other group did a similar study, and we get similar results. This that's presented for you is going to be the hourly rate bands. And the reason why I bring that to your attention is that we still have some complications when we're talking about different contract lengths. So we have, expands out, our bi-weekly folks are on 260-day contracts. Our year-long monthly folks are on 255-day contracts. We have 221-day contracts, we have 205 contracts, 211. So this is the most simplistic way that we can put this in so that everybody can see what those hourly rates are. Some folks' contract lengths and hours per day are different. We have some folks that are on a seven-and-a-half-hour day and some that are on a 7.75-hour day and then an eight-hour day. So the hourly rates is the easiest way that everybody can see what that looks like going forward. This is what hap, this is in addition to those folks that have a master's plus 30 or an EDS or an EDD or a PhD. This is the educational stipend that they will receive. And something I'll draw your attention to is that this amount is regardless to contract length. And the reason why I say that and bring that up to you all is if I'm a teacher in a classroom and I have a PhD and I'm teaching in the classroom, I'm getting $5,000. If I'm an assistant principal on a 221-day contract and I have a PhD, I'm getting $5,000. So it's not tied to the annual contract lengths of that. And essentially, as you look back and track it back, it's higher valued in the classroom than beyond. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer to finish this out.
Thank you, Scott. Madam Chair, members of the board. So why implement in one year? When we came to you back at the quarterly work session, we said that we may be bringing a phased implementation. So we have shared that the full implementation would cost $39 million and we were not sure that we would be able to do that in one year. We are sure now. So why implement in one year? Because it brings all of our employees to market value at the same time. It doesn't require the district and it doesn't require the board to select certain categories of employees to go first in a phased implementation. And what that would also do is increase compression for a period of time. And Kristin from Evergreen explained what that might look like if we advanced some employees to a new scale and not others at the same time. And also, we know we can do this. We have visited the budget and revisited the budget. And thanks to the foresight of the budget team, we built capacity in this current budget for non-recurring costs that we can put towards this salary study implementation in one year, should the board vote on Thursday to move to these new salary schedules. Why vote now? There was some questions at the quarterly work session and also at the March work session when Evergreen was here as to the timing of the vote to transition to the new salary schedules in advance of voting on the proposed budget at the end of the month. The vote now will help the district. Should the board vote to implement these new salary schedules, the vote now will allow us to be prepared for a July 1 start date for the new salaries. As you know, it is a significant undertaking. We have nearly 9,000 employees that would be transitioning to this new scale and making sure we get it right would be very important and require some time. We do believe that we are prepared to do that and are excited about the possibilities that this could bring for both current employees in the district and future employees in the district. How did we get here? We got here in a couple of different ways. By paying down debt or putting $23.1 million towards debt service in the current FY24 budget. That is, putting it towards debt service is putting it towards non-recurring costs, so dollars that would not be committed in a following year's budget. That has created capacity for us to put some of those dollars into recurring costs and into salary study implementation. We prioritize schools. We have significantly reduced district-level spending. We have created sustainable budgets at the division level by reprioritizing the spending and putting an emphasis on protecting the classroom and funding what works. This approach identified $13.4 million for us to invest in the salary study recommendations. And planning ahead, we don't plan to use all of that debt paydown, all of that $23.1 million. We don't plan to put all of that into the recurring costs of the salary study, but plan to put some of that into non-recurring costs again next year in the budget that we bring to you at the end of April to allow us to create capacity in future years as well. So what's next? We, as you know, on the board's agenda this week, we are asking for approval of Evergreen's recommendation to transition to these two new salary schedules. And as the board has pointed out previously, and we would call out as well, voting on that now does obligate a significant portion of the proposed budget for FY25. And that proposed budget will be brought to the board at the special called meeting on April 25. July 1 is when the new scales would become active, should they be approved this week. And just for logistics, I believe that Scott hinted at this a little bit. But it would, because of the timeframe, each employee will get an individual notification as to grade band placement, step placement, annual salary. Those likely will not all happen at the same time, but will happen close in time. So the employees that are year-round would receive a first paycheck on the new scale in July. And employees that are not year-round would receive that first paycheck on the new scale in August. So we would prioritize the employees that would fully transition first and do those notifications on a rolling basis as we get closer to the time that those payments will be received. So that was a lot. Do you all have questions?
Thank you. Again, thank you for all of this work. I really hope that our teachers and staff and families are going to be really happy with this. I think the question we might all want to know is where are the custodians going to be on this step? Do we know that yet? Or on the big spreadsheet of things?
Yes. Wait, let me get back here. So where custodians will, and as Scott explained, not everyone will receive the same increase. And that shows that some of our employees are closer to market value than others. What we did not anticipate tonight is announcing where specific categories of people fall, categories of positions fall on the scale. We want to make sure that we have reviewed Evergreen's recommendations, every single employee before we get on in front of those advancements or those announcements. But we'll provide an individual notification to all employees.
When do you think you would have something like that?
So Scott's team, the team that he has assembled, has already put a plan in place for implementation. So should the board approve this week, then we expect an announcement to staff members shortly after that that approval has been made. And it'll probably be a couple of weeks at least, but those individual notifications would start after that.
And so just to ask a couple more questions about this. So when we're looking at the profile of a custodian and it says step eight, does that mean they have been in their position for eight years? Or does that mean they have eight years of experience? How does that come together?
Sure, that's a good question. So as Evergreen shared in March, what they are recommending and what we intend, the way we intend to implement is for our teachers as step plus one. So that would be pretty easy once, now that the proposed teacher scale is public. That's pretty easy for a teacher to see where they may fall on the new scale. What they are recommending for the general scale is the class year parity. So that's taking number of years in the position or step on the position that they're in and transferring. So this would be a custodian with eight years of experience moving to the new scale.
Okay. So, because I know like last year when we talked about some of this stuff and we talked about consideration when a custodian comes on as a new custodian to us, that we would consider some experience. Would that still happen under this?
Yes, it would. So our current practice is to consider up to five years of relevant outside experience. And Scott, one of the recommendations of Evergreen was for us to convene a team to see how, review all of those procedures going forward. So Scott has convened that team and is working on it. We do not anticipate that that will go away.
Okay, thank you. This looks great.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both and everybody else who's put so much work into this. I haven't had my one-on-one meeting yet, but I'll just ask the question here. I'm trying to understand how potential cost of living increases in addition to the scale, impact the scale. So Mr. Bolton, you talked about that the spread between each area is 4%, like as you go down. Am I right in calculating this that if, for some reason, let's say over the next 20 years, we decide every year to, in addition, give a 4% COLA increase, is in effect that means that people with their step and their COLA increase get an 8% increase year to year? How do they work together is my question?
So a couple of things, when we think about it previously, the way that we have done it is we've said, okay, everybody gets 4%. So your salary is increased by 4%. Well, and the scaling properties there, any time that you multiply by 4%, you've also increased the disparity between the lowest to the, by 4%. What Evergreen has recommended, that we look at the midpoint. So we look at the midpoint of this graph, look at what 4% looks like and give everybody that same so that it maintains the integrity of the spread of 65% across. So when you're talking about 4%, you're talking about 4% of the midpoint across all grade bands. And so that it maintains that difference from one step to the next step.
I got you. I like that a lot better.
I do want to say one more thing based on your question. I just want to clear up that there's not 4% between each step on a grade.
It's the categories down the column.
Yeah, it's the categories down the column, right.
Yeah, it looks like, I did a little bit of math. It looks like it's, in some, it's about 3% going right to left. Is that right?
There's a, probably pretty close to that because there's a 65% spread across the whole scale.
Yeah, a little bit, a little bit less than 3%. So yeah, in terms of job category, I guess, I mean, that's essentially what the rows are, right? Like based on category is where you're going to be slotted in there. There's a 4% difference all the way down the scale. And if you, no matter what column you're in, whether or not you're in class one or class 14, if you go down that, it's going to be 4% is what you're saying. Correct?
Correct, like between 101 and 102, for example, 4%.
Right. And any potential cost of living increase is applied after the step?
So it.
Increase, right? So like if I'm moving from one year to the next in my position, I get my step increase. And then if the board approved a 4%, that 4% is on top of my step increase that's already been applied.
So yes, but it may not mean, like Scott was explaining, it may not mean the same percent.
Correct, because it's based on a midpoint. But my, regardless of what the number ends up being, it's applied after the step, not prior?
So yes, that is how we would anticipate. I will say that this, moving to these new scales will impact how we give increases in the future because we are making a large effort to bring everyone to market value. So increases may look different in the future. But yes, if we give an increase across the scale, then we would give the increase and people would progress up the scale.
Yeah, I mean, to me, there's two really positive things that are happening in what you're saying. One is we're looking at the midpoint and trying to decrease that disparity. But also the fact that we're looking at potential increases even beyond that a little bit more creatively. It's really, it's easy from a math standpoint to say, let's just give everybody 4%. It creates a lot of challenges, which I know the salary study is trying to solve. And I guess what I'm saying is, I'm glad to hear that we're not just solving the challenge, we're solving the thing that caused us part of the challenge. Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely.
We're not repeating some of the same mistakes that maybe we, you know, I'm not saying that anybody did anything wrong, but we're trying to correct some things that we could wake up 20 years from now and be thinking, oh, we're in the same situation because we're not creating our methodology. At the same time, we're fixing the tool, if that makes sense.
Right.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Triplet?
Yeah, I appreciate the work you all did figuring all this out and also trying to explain it all to us who don't fully understand it. So that's an excellent job. Just to clarify, nobody's going backwards in this, right? You start messing with people's pay and that makes everybody nervous, right? So nobody's going backwards at all.
No one's going backwards.
And that's good. And then I assume that this will probably get answered in more detail in the one-on-ones, but kind of exactly where, you know, you talked about cutting spending, you know, at the district level and that kind of thing. I assume we'll dive into that a little bit more, kind of in those budget meetings just to figure out where that money's coming from. And I know you're looking at this. And then the other question I had, I assume we're still looking at the starting pay of $50,000 by whatever, what year is that, 2020?
FY27. Yes, we are. So, and that would be on the teacher scale. So this, moving to this new, transitioning to this new salary schedule makes a significant move in that direction. But yes, we still will be looking to move to the base of $50,000 by FY27.
Hey, Sergeant, is, I mean, the impact of the current, are we currently about 44 something? So that would be, I mean, this would be a huge step toward the 50, but it still didn't get us there.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate moving to a dollar rather than a percentage. That's something we've talked about for a long time and I appreciate that happening. As we're talking in our individual meetings, I think it would be helpful for us to be able to see, instead of just the snapshot of a sample person, or in addition, I guess I should say, to see the hourly rate. Because when we're looking at those different job titles, some of those job titles are working 200 days, some of them are working 255 days. And so I think as we're looking at it, it's important for us to see that something that appears to be a lower pay may actually be a higher hourly pay because of the days. And that would be helpful for me to see. I've had several questions from teachers who are concerned about the stipend. And I see how it's, if you'll go back to the one you were actually on already. So the concern they have is that by being a stipend on a separate page, it could go away at some point. So my question is, why would we, is there a difference in having it listed separately as a stipend and listing it as another column up there so that it would just continue out?
So let me make sure I understand. You mean having the educational stipend listed just here too? I think that we could, so it won't just apply to the teacher scale. It would apply to the general scale too. But I wouldn't see an issue with making sure they appear on the same page when we publish on the website.
I think that would take away some of that concern. It's obviously easier just to say, here's what it is. But I think if people could see it as BA, MS, MS plus 30, they could see that column. That feels more permanent and I think that would alleviate that concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Horne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for such great work. And this is an exciting thing to be able to do and I'm thankful for it. I would be remiss if I did not ask this question because I've heard it from a couple of our longtime teachers about the, and I'm sure you can anticipate my question, about service over 20 years. Is that accounted for in the grade band? Or can you speak to how those work together?
Sure, so, and we have gotten that question too. Evergreen did not recommend lengthening our number of steps and have not recently for other districts. They've seen a trend towards getting the money to the employee faster. So having that 20, it's actually zero through 20, 21-step scale. But yes, there are those retention bumps. So 20 years would be one of those retention bumps. There's still the educational stipend, the incentive for additional education. But ultimately, the recommendation was to get the employees the money faster within those 21 steps rather than to increase. Rather than to increase. It would, they would still recommend a 65% spread regardless of the number of steps. So, if they, it would, it would take longer to get that maximum amount.
Okay. So, a teacher who has worked for the school system for 20 years, they may actually get a larger increase than maybe what they would have prior? Is that correct?
So, let, let me see what the teacher, so that's a step 14. That, yes, they will receive, and they, they will receive an increase as a result of this.
Okay, okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Ms. Bike.
Thank you. I have a question about the, the stipend.
Sure.
If, if it's a position that were like a school secretary or a custodian or some sort of staff member where a bachelor's or master's or any sort of advanced degree were required, how would this potentially, would this potentially apply to them? Like, if we had a, a secretary that had a, a bachelor's degree or a master's degree, do they get any benefit?
No. So, they would, they would receive the market value for the position that they were in, but the stipend would only come for the master's plus 30, the EDS or the doctorate.
Okay. And do I understand it correctly that the master's plus 30, is that 30 years?
Thirty hours.
What is the 30, 30 hours?
Thirty hours.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Owen.
Thank you. So, I have a question coming off of Ms. Bike's question. Are those degrees still supposed to be in the certification area or in an area that's relevant? Or could they be in anything?
Currently, they could be, they could be in anything. Like, the doctorate could be in anything. But that, that is how our current scales work also.
Okay. I thought our current scales were specific to, to in your area. So, I'm wrong there?
I was just going to add, that's actually our compensation philosophy team are actually considering those exact things right now. So, there could be a situation where we're looking at certifications. It's been mentioned in the past, you know, if you've got a CPA in a position, what is that equivalent to? If you've got different certifications, it would be, but it's got to be applied to those essential functions of that job. That's been discussed, but that's not been completely framed out. That will be included when we publish that compensation procedure protocol. And it'll be published to the, the public at that time. So, we're still looking at some of those things as a, as Evergreen recommended to us to consider that when we're looking at our compensation philosophy.
Thank you. And Mr. Bolton, while you're up there, the other thing I think would be helpful for teachers who are looking at over 20 years, you've explained to me that getting that money earlier means there's more money over time. And I don't think everybody can see how that works. So, I think if, if they could see the difference in what if we spread it out to 30 years and what if we have it earlier, if there was some kind of chart as an example, so that they could see that they are making more money over time, I think that would be helpful there. Not, I mean, not like a chart for everybody, but just a sample so that that would sort of be easier to, to visualize.
Yeah, that's a, that's great. But to reiterate what Jennifer said, the recommendation is a spread of 65%. So, spreading 65% over 30 years means that you're, you're taking more years to get to that spread. And so, yeah, we, let me see what we could do to, to create that.
Are there any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Again, I know it's not easy, but very exciting work. Yeah. Next on our agenda, let's see, Dr. Adams, do you have an update on custodial staffing?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So, currently, we have 73 openings. Four of those schools are at 50% vacancy and one school exceeds the 50%.
Thank you. Ms. Christie, do you have a strategic plan committee update?
Yes, thank you.
Lots of updates.
Yes, lots of updates. Thank you, Madam Chair. Following last month's board approval of using two external vendors for stakeholder engagement and strategic planning, the strategic planning committee met on March 25. And we had originally planned to review all proposals received for the stakeholder engagement work. But at that point in time, we had only received two quotes. And, and after speaking with Mr. Dupler, I don't know if you want to speak to it, in county procurement, as far as those guidelines went, that if we wanted to proceed without having the three quotes, we would have to go through an RFP process. Is that, that's correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Christie. So, yes, so the way procurement works, whether, certainly Knox County procurement would handle an RFP process if it gets to that. And that's when the cost is going to be over $50,000. But if it's between $25,000 and $50,000, then you can use an alternate process which calls for three quotes. The catch is they have to be three bona fide quotes that are, you know, actually given by different companies. So, yes.
Thank you. So, after having that information, the committee then had the discussion on the best way to proceed. And after reviewing the previous timeline that had been presented to the board, felt like it may have been a little bit of a blessing in disguise to push out the timeline by about two months. The adjustment will allow us to have a little more time to gather the required number of proposals for the stakeholder engagement work. And also to push the engagement process to the August, September timeframe instead of the previous April, May timeframe. And just because at the end of school year, there's so much other, so many other things going on. People get distracted and they're trying to wind down and get a little bit of a break. And, you know, there probably will be more engagement if we wait until August or September. So, saying that, and as Ms. Henderson announced, we plan to meet again on April 8 to review any other proposals that are received before making our recommendations to the board on a final contract for their consideration at the May board meeting. Next steps will be to return with our final recommendation and contract for stakeholder engagement for board consideration in May and for the engagement processes to occur in August and September. And just in full disclosure, Ms. Cottney takes amazing minutes, but I was out of town when this meeting occurred. So, I don't know if Ms. Henderson or Reverend Butler, either of you have anything to add or want to speak to that? Or if that sums it up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chair of the committee. I didn't think I heard you mention that the RFP process also was somewhat delayed. So, we would have a gap between, if we had had three, we'd have a gap between the mutual understanding, I'm sorry, the MOU and, and the RFP. So, that is another reason why it just makes sense to move the timeline back a couple of months because that RFP, RFP would be difficult to get in that timeframe.
Yep.
All right. Thank you for sharing that.
Yep. I think that covers it. Mr. Watson, do you have a question or a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Christie, you mentioned that by the time you all met, I think you said in March, you only had two. And then you said you're going to meet again and discuss any future ones. Do we know, have any been submitted since that date? Since the 25th? Are we beyond three now?
Yes, I believe so. Is that correct, Ms. Horne?
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Yes, so there will be three. Any more discussion on this item? Thank you, Ms. Christie. I know you weren't here, so thank you. That was a great summary. And Ms. Cottney, for your amazing notes for finding it. Mr. Triplet, legislative update.
Yes, what would we do without Ms. Cody and her notes?
[laughing]
I know that Ms. Owen's going to take a deep dive into pending legislation, but, so I'll, I'll be brief and, and not take too long. But a couple of things, I know we had put on our legislative agenda, the lottery bill, and it looks like everybody who wants to have a, a cakewalk will, is heading that direction. So, that will be a good thing. The other, the only other bill I, I want to mention is Senate Bill 2183. It's House Bill 2326. If you want to write those down, that note's down. But that is related to fourth grade retention and promotion. And that has moved out of that committee into like, I think, the Finance Ways and Means Committees now. So, it looks like there, there is a path that will go into effect upon, you know, when it, when it passes. So, with the governor's signature. So, I think that there is a pathway to promotion with some tutoring and some, some, you know, some interventions in the fifth grade. I did not find, interestingly enough, in there, and, and I know the, the staff in Knox County is looking at this, obviously closely as well, but I did not find anything in there about, about working the summer on that and the fourth grade one. So, which I know there was with the third grade.
Like the summer school, you mean?
Yeah, summer school or anything. I did not find that. I may be, I may be wrong on that. But it does not show anything related to keeping folks through the summer. Just really relates to interventions in their fifth grade year. Obviously, they can also be held back if that's the choice, but some tutoring and that kind of thing in the fifth grade. So, anyway, you can take a look at, in that in detail. And I know, obviously, Dr. Rice and his team will have to figure out exactly how that all works in, in practicality. We just get to read it and think about it and talk about it, but they've got to do the work. But, so anyway, that's the only, it's Senate Bill 2183, if you want to look it up. But that is the only legislative updates I have. I'll let Ms. Owen take care of some of the rest, so.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Triplet. Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's not going to be a deep dive. It's going to be a kiddie pool. So, and I'm going to do it from here. So, if, if you'll just pass the thing. Oh, was it up there? Sorry. So, last year, I asked for support on legislation and it'd be pretty hypocritical of me to not give that support. So, I want to be sure I'm doing that. Thank you so much. And what I initially intended was just to give you some information about a couple of visits I took to the Capitol. So, I visited the legislature during several organizations that, having their day on the Hill. And it was great to see teachers from all over the state taking part of their spring break and advocating for our schools and our students. I want to give a shout out to TEA for providing the opportunity for our teachers and their families to participate in civication each year. It's a great time for families to learn about legislation and for our teachers and students to talk with legislators about the needs of our schools. I don't have the data. It looked to me like there were a lot more teachers there than usual and a lot more than I've seen in a long, long time. Also, there was an annual day on the Hill for kids, not corporations, that took place in March. And it was a joint effort of Tennessee for All and the statewide organization for community empowerment. We talked with legislators about fully funding public schools, closing loopholes that allow corporations to escape paying their fair share of taxes. And I also learned that Tennessee is one of only 13 states that taxes groceries. So, to move on from there, I may need to switch up right here. Right. We have a few things that I just want you to be aware of that are new public chapters. We have a fifth grade history requirement. As enacted, it requires beginning with the 26, 27 school year. So, we have a little time, each, each district and public charter school to have fifth grade students complete one semester of Tennessee history in the first semester of their fifth grade year. So, that's something we might want to be aware of to prepare for. Work-based learning has increased the number of credits a student may earn in a work-based, whoops, in a work-based learning class. It's now six hours rather than three. It also reduces the amount of supervised work experience required for each additional credit learned or earned, rather. There's a school bus notice law that I listened to for a while. It requires that we post in a conspicuous notice on each school bus to be sure that it says that no person shall enter onto the school bus except those authorized by law. And when discussion took place, the Senate wanted to know why we need this. Don't people know they're not supposed to get on a school bus? And Representative Lundberg said that it's because we have, in some areas, some parents who feel like they are supposed to be on the bus for some reason. And so, they are entering school buses. And that's as, as far as they really explained. But apparently, that's become problematic in some places. And so, we are all going to have to have a notice on our school buses. So, the next thing is the Smart Heart Act. Very basically, it says that we have to maintain an AED, which we generally already do. But it also establishes some review and other processes for training annually. And it adds training in CPR, first aid, and the use of the AED to the annual training for coaches and athletic directors. Another one that's going to be a little interesting and tricky is determining the cause of a fire alarm. And this is in response to Covenant shooting. It requires each LEA to develop a procedure to determine the cause of a fire alarm, including the potential of an active shooter event prior to evacuating. It requires us to coordinate with appropriate safety teams to incorporate the procedure. And it must be implemented no later than January 1, 2025. So, those are some major ones that have already passed. A couple that we might want to take a look at. One is, it's been dubbed a land grab, and that may or may not be accurate. But it's basically that we have to have a list at all times of our underutilized properties. And the thing that has gotten a little different as this bill has moved along is that it's changing how underutilized properties are defined. And it's allowing the State Board of Education to define underutilized properties. And we all know that means that we don't know what that definition is actually going to be for a while. So, we need to keep an eye on that one. Fourth grade retention, it says, whoops, I didn't move. It says that it is in Senate Finance TBA. It is not, so Senate Finance has not scheduled this one yet. It is giving us a little bit of leeway in determining how fourth graders are promoted to fifth grade. And if you look down there at the little tiny paragraph, requires certain students promoted to the fifth grade to receive tutoring services for the entirety of the student's fifth grade year. If it passes as it's currently amended, it looks like we could make a decision to allow a student to be promoted to fifth grade with parent input, teacher input, everyone making that decision, if we maintain that tutoring throughout fifth grade and possibly even continuing on. So, that's still unclear. And of course, that will be some rules promulgated by the State Board, too. I might also mention that there's, have been some changes in third grade regarding rules on when they can be, when they can appeal. So, last year, what we saw were lots of third graders had their appeals granted very quickly. Those rules have changed. If a student has a catastrophic event, that catastrophic event has to have happened within 60 days of the TCAP test. So, let's say something, major death in the family happened 61 days before the TCAP. It's currently assumed that that probably wouldn't count as an appeal. So, some of those rules, we will need to take a really close look at as we come up on that time. And last one to take a look at, the Educational Freedom Scholarship Act, which is known as vouchers. This is not currently, well, it's, it's being discussed a lot. I don't want to say it's not currently moving because everybody down there is talking about it. But it is not moving through committees right now. There's some disagreement between the House and the Senate regarding which version to pass. And two of the fiscal notes are there, so you can kind of compare. You can see that the House version is significantly more. There's also another Senate version that is less than the one that you have here. And we also have in the budget that we have 144 million allocated, which is definitely not the numbers that you're looking at there. So, they are going back and forth quite a bit, trying to determine a version of the bill that they could possibly agree on. And right now, they are not very agreeable. So, that's where that stands. So, see, you want to have any questions on any of that? That's about as fast as I think I can go.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will move into our regular session agenda. Board members, I just want to mention publicly that the Naming Facilities Committee
Board members, I just want to mention publicly that the Naming Facilities Committee met last Thursday and made the decision to recommend a nomination to name the Carter Elementary School Cafeteria in honor of retired KCS employee Sandra Holbert for your consideration. Based on the committee's request, Superintendent Ryzwick and I agreed to add that as an item under the regular agenda items. I believe that Ms. Christie will provide us, you have a lot of updates this meeting, will provide us with an update when we review that item on the April 4th agenda. But I just wanted to note that this item was added after the agenda was published on Wednesday. So with that, we'll move into our regular agenda. Anything on 7A or B? All right, moving into items and contracts, C, 1, 2, or 3? Gary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to talk about the MOU with the Parks and Rec for Tommy Shumpert. And let me see here, I'm just trying to pull it up, and that's, I believe that's B, isn't it?
It's 2.
C?
Yeah.
C2.
7C2.
Okay. So, and I worked with Terry to get you all the latest agreement, and it is attached. So I just wanted to make that distinction. On page 2, paragraph 4, I've added some language to make it clear that if the board approves this, and this is, this is very similar to what the board's already approved for Carter Park. So, but if the board approves this, you are giving Dr. Ryzwick and the commission will give Mr. Mack authority to agree on the final boundaries and the final survey for this project. And of course, the reason for bringing this now, even before the survey's ready, is because the survey, 1, is taking longer than anticipated. 2, we needed to move with some haste on this because, because there's already a baseball field out there for Central, and we wanted to, for them to be able to take control of that field and be able to maintain that field. So if there's any other questions, let me know, but I mean, I just wanted to point that out, that the plat is not attached, and we'd be asking that you give Dr. Ryzwick the authority to approve that. Yeah, thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Gary. Okay, 4 or 5? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is actually related to 4, 5, and 6, I remember 5, 6, and 7 because they're similar.
Okay, yep.
I don't recall in the last three and a half years that I've been on the board, similar agreements coming to the board. Is this a new initiative? And if so, can somebody just talk about the reason for it and what's prompting it? From what I read, I'm excited about it, and I think it's good work. I just, I don't remember seeing this in the past.
Yeah, Dr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Watson, no, that is not new. This is an annual agreement. It's a partnership with all of the, for our, to my understanding, for all of our adjudicated.
What time of year do we normally pass those? Because I looked in past spring agendas and I didn't see it. That's why I wanted to. I wasn't going to stick my foot in my mouth intentionally, so like, I looked to see if I could find it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Brown, I think it's better to say that it's a periodic.
Not annual.
Periodically comes up. It's not, it's not annual. I mean, because this one's for four years.
Yeah, because the first one's for, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so the ones in the past have probably, could have been for more than that, frankly.
Okay.
Periodically comes up.
Well, because in my recollection, in a way, it hasn't come up. Can somebody speak to it? Because I think it's important for the public to know and understand what drives this and why we're doing this. And speaking in generalities is completely fine. I'm not looking for a lot of specifics, but.
Yeah, Dr. Brown?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, so these are agreements with different providers of education. So basically, these organizations, we have a memorandum of understanding with them so that if our students are incarcerated in these different places, then they have the right to provide the educational services for those students so we can continue their education when they're not with us.
Yeah, I just think it's in, I mean, for those in the public who have not had to engage in the justice system, especially if they've not had to have their minors engaged in the justice system, I think it's important to know that we as a district and we as our community value their continued education and try to take the steps necessarily through partnering with different entities to make sure that's provided, so.
Yeah, I think regardless of their placement, they are our students. And so, yeah, we want to continue to support them until they can come back to us and come back to our facilities.
Thank you.
I think, too, a lot of times, we go through these items and contracts and go 1, 2, 3, and, you know, there's a lot of great stuff that's going on here and a lot of good things to highlight. So any more discussion on those three items that we just talked, discussed? Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are the staff, are the teachers at the facilities our staff or their staff?
Dr. Brown?
They are their staff. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it's a contract with, yeah. 8 or 9? 10 or 11? 12, 13, or 14? Or 15? Okay, moving on to board policies, and these were discussed in policy review. 8A or B? C or D? E or F? G or H? I or J? K or L? M or N? O or, Mr. Watson?
Thank you. I was trying to pull up policy at the same time I was trying to hear the letters. N is the public forum policy, correct? Okay.
Yes.
So I apologize, I was not able to make the last policy review meeting, so I'm sure this conversation was had. But on page 1 of the, of the public forum policy, and I think this is probably the most discussed policy since I've been on the board. I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying. On rows 16, lines 16 and 17, no, I'm sorry, a little bit further down, on 37, 38, the lines that says, "who remarks are frivolous and repetitive and/or harassing." Mr. Dupler, if you would kind of speak to some of the recent case law about what's prompted some of our changes. But to me, I'm wondering if it's, if we should remove the words frivolous and repetitive. I'm not sure, to me, the person who would be speaking would decide if something is frivolous. And if something is repetitive, does that mean they're just repeating the same thing over and over again? Or does it mean they're repeating something that somebody else already said in the, in the group? And to me, out of the interest of trying to honor some of this recent case law that's come out, I mean, I would make this more simple and just say that, hey, if you're harassing somebody, that's probably crossing the line. But these other words, I'm not sure how helpful they are and how we can, I wouldn't want Mr. Triplet to say, "You're being frivolous. You can't speak anymore." Like, I don't know how that works, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Watson? So the wording that you see comes directly out of the Sixth Circuit case, Eisen versus Madison County.
So it's in there.
And it is exactly as, as the court lists it in that case. And we did have a discussion about it at policy review, and we talked about, you know, frivolous and, you know, maybe a, you know, a definition for that. And I think, I think the discussion at policy review was, if you look at the rest of the policy and it talks about, you know, coming before the board and speaking of matters on education. So if you, if you had a matter that was outside of education, then that, then that could be frivolous. You know, the reason that these words are more, more approving to the court than what was there is that these words, according to the court, better, better describe a situation that's not based upon the subject matter. So, so that's why they say it does not violate the First Amendment. And, you know, certainly not saying that this, that this board has violated the First Amendment, you know, in, in going through this policy. And this board, as you said, I agree with you. I think this is probably the most reviewed policy of the board. But, but it's gone through several changes throughout several years and recent years to bring it more in line, ever, ever more in line with what the court's guide. So that's, that's exactly what this is.
I agree. I think the context of the policy as a whole can help you kind of hone in on what frivolous is intend, what frivolous means or is intended here. Is there a legal definition of frivolous?
They didn't, the court didn't, didn't provide that. I mean, I mean, there's a lot of words. There's, you know, in a lot of cases, what, what the court will do, instead of having to provide some separate legal definition, will simply say whatever the plain meaning of the word is. So then you would go to a source like Webster's or a similar source to try and ascertain the plain meaning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. All right, O, I guess I stopped with O. We'll just go with O. O or P? Q, R? S, T? The whole alphabet tonight. U, V? W, X? I feel like I should sing it. Y? Y or C? Okay, moving on to grants, number 9, A? B? Or C? Moving on to regular agenda items, 10A. I know we just had that wonderful presentation. Thank you, Ms. Hemelgarn and Scott Bolton. Or B? Ms. Christie?
Did you want me to speak to this now or Thursday, or does it matter?
Just whenever you.
Okay, I'll just do it now.
Okay.
So the board's Naming Facilities Committee, which consists of Mr. Triplet, myself, and Mr. Watson, met on Thursday, March 28th at 4:00 PM. And the committee had convened to review a nomination received to name the Carter Elementary School Cafeteria in honor of a KCS retired employee, Sandra Nell. Wait, is that the correct, no?
Her name is Sandra Nell Holbert.
Holbert. Sandra Nell Holbert, sorry. And a copy of the nomination is attached to the April 4th electronic agenda after reviewing the nomination documentation and recommendation letters, as well as hearing from the Carter High School, I mean, elementary school administrator, who I believe plans on attending Thursday night, as well as the cafeteria manager. We voted unanimously to move forward with our recommendation to the full board for consideration of their approval of the nomination. It was a good meeting, and it was especially nice to have the administrator and the cafeteria manager here. And they had a lot of really inspiring things to say about Ms. Holbert. So I am looking forward to them being here on Thursday as well.
I love that. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Christie. And just to give a little bit of insight into our conversation, we, we talked about how we don't believe that any other cafeteria in our school system has been formally named. We know that individual schools might stick a plaque up or whatever, but none of them have gone through the process. And we thought, even though this might cause precedent, and maybe some other schools will opt to do this, we think that's a really good thing. I mean, what better way to honor somebody who's given that much time to our food service than naming the cafeteria after them? So I, I hope other schools kind of take that lead and make suggestion because, you know, sometimes we're limited in the ways that we can honor people. But I think that's a really appropriate way to honor folks like Sandra, so.
That's really cool. Looking forward to that. Moving on to, I don't think we have any public forum, right? Moving on to board forum. Celeste?
I would just like to highlight this, in my opinion, amazing work of a student that is my friend. So her name's Maya. She goes to Bearden High School. She's a senior. And she has, on her own, completely revamped what we all know as Powderpuff Football. So at Bearden, I believe it started about three years ago. And this year, it's been renamed to Girls' Flag Football because the name Powderpuff is sexist because it refers to a women's makeup product. So she did that all on her own, met with all the teachers that were involved with Powder, or, sorry, Girls' Flag Football, and at the same time revamped all the rules and made it more fair. So last year, she coached her own team, did not have any football players coach her team, and she won the whole tournament. And this year, she's doing the same thing, and I have the privilege of being on her team this year as well as last year. And our game is on Thursday, so I will not be here, but I will be updating you all on how it goes. So thank you.
Yes, please update us. It's a good reason to miss, to miss the meeting. Good luck with your game. Reverend Butler? Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to share that my greatest athletic injury was playing flag football.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to be on a roll here, Celeste, so I wasn't planning on saying anything. But I have to tell you that women's flag football gets a lot more competitive at the collegiate level. My wife was on a team in college, and there is not a game that they played that the opposing team didn't have somebody go to the hospital. I'm just, I'm just saying. Serious business, so.
Wow. Mr. Triplet?
With this conversation, we're canceling the meeting and we're all going.
Yeah, exactly. And I want to come watch. Ms. Pike?
Thank you. I just want to highlight, it's April already. And while that's hard to believe, that does bring us to Autism Awareness Month. And so a little bit of history is that autism awareness started in April of 1970. I was so surprised that that was that long ago. But that in 2011, they moved to autism acceptance to kind of, as we learn things and bring us all up to date and make progress about things. But of course, that's taken some time. So to read a little bit more information to you, I promise I will be brief. April is Autism Acceptance Month, but many, but many, especially those outside of the autism community, used to refer to the month as Autism Awareness Month. Autistic advocacy organizations have been using acceptance rather than awareness for over a decade. And the Autism Society of America shifted to the terminology in 2021, so fairly recently. And some of you in here may have heard of the saying of, "If you've met one autistic person, you've met one autistic person." That goes for many people and different, if you've met one woman, you've met one woman, and so on and so forth. So it's really hard to judge and stereotype people. And so being in that community, I would just like to say that we're all a lot more brighter than stereotypes would have us all believe. And I would urge everyone to look at how we can all be a little bit more inclusive in our lives of autistic individuals. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Ms. Warren? Mr. Wright? Welcome to your second month. Ms. Christie? All right, well, everybody get home safe. I know we're under a tornado warning, or tornado watch currently, so please, everybody get home safe. And with that, we are adjourned.